Good evening, I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Here.
Councilmember Mau?
Here.
Councilmember Karashi?
Here.
Councilmember Seaman?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Schultz?
Here.
Okay. We seem a little timid tonight. We are all here. All right, welcome everyone. I'll just run through our, I have my rolling agenda somewhere and, no, I think I lost it. Here it is. Nope, that's an old one.
There you go.
Nope, um, I'll, back it is. I have it, yep. Thank you very much. Great, so this evening's agenda will stay the same. And then, next week, on Wednesday, May 18th, we have the second reading of our ordinances adopting the FY 2017 tax rate, our storm water management budget, our FY 2017 budget, and the second reading ordinance establishing a housing reserve fund. We also have the second reading ordinance approving the franchise agreement with Comcast, and a resolution giving direction on the cable memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County, and a first reading ordinance amending our city code regarding the commercial use of single-use carryout plastic bags. We also have a first reading ordinance terminating Area B parking permit program, and a resolution providing for appointments. Next week, we will also have a work session discussing a proposed extension of our owner-occupied group house registration program. And that's our meeting next Wednesday, May 18th, that will be held here at the community center. Then on Friday, May 20th, we have a community coffee at 8:00 AM. I will be there with councilmember Mau at the Spring Mill Bread Company in Tacoma Junction. And so, I think the city manager and the deputy city manager will be there, and I hope particularly residents from War II, but from all over the city, will join us for our coffee next Friday. And then on Sunday, May 22nd, the city council is tentatively scheduled to go into a closed session on Sunday afternoon at 3:30 to receive legal advice regarding the development agreement with NDC for the redevelopment of the city-owned lot in Tacoma Junction. On Wednesday, May 25th, we are tentatively scheduled to not have a city council meeting that night. If we get all our work done on the budget over the next couple of weeks, we will not be meeting on Wednesday, May 25th. Then we come back on Wednesday, June 1st, and please spread the word that the meeting on June 1st will be held at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. So on June 1st, at 7:30, we will have our city council meeting at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. That evening, we will have a voting session, and we'll have the second reading ordinance terminating the Area B parking permit program. Our work sessions that evening will be a follow-up discussion on the community conversation on affordable housing policy, a proposed revisions to the community grants program, and we're tentatively scheduled to discuss legislative priorities and state legislation to be proposed to the Maryland Municipal League for the next legislative session in Annapolis next year. So that is Wednesday, June 1st. Then our next meeting, Wednesday, June 8th, we will be back here in the auditorium at 7:30, and we will tentatively have a public hearing on the proposed charter amendment to change the date of the city elections to coincide with state and federal elections. And we will have a voting session, tentatively scheduled, is the first reading resolution amending the charter amendment to change the date of the city elections, a second reading ordinance amending our city code regarding the restriction of using the commercial use of single-use, there's too many uses there, the plastic bag ordinance, we'll have a second reading that evening. There will be a first reading ordinance extending the owner-occupied group house registration program, and a work session discussing the police department plans and general orders for the use of portable cameras in the community. So that's our agenda for the next couple of weeks. Now we'll move to public comments on voting items, these are on voting items this evening. Our first voting item is a first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2017 tax rates. So is there anyone who would like to speak regarding our ordinance adopting the FY 2017 tax rate?
Good evening, folks, Paul Huberman, Ward 3. I just wanted to finally come back and say thank you. The last meeting was four hours plus, and I know you wrestled with the issue, and I have been strident about my opposition to raising it very much at all, and I would have preferred one of the council members' options to keep the constant yield rate the same. However, I know that you guys wrestle with a lot of different alternatives, and, you know, as I've said before, it's not easy sitting up there, but you guys are really doing a good job and, you know, showing quite a bit of leadership. So I just thought that, you know, in light of the, you know, open criticism to issues that I disagree with, it's only appropriate that I say thank you for all your hard effort.
Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak to the first reading of our FY 2017 tax rates? All right, then the next voting item we have is the first reading ordinance adopting the 2017 storm water management budget. Any public comments on that? Our third voting item this evening is the first reading ordinance adopting the 2017 budget. Any public comments on our 2017 budget? Okay, our fourth, our item today that we will be voting on is a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of equipment for the multimedia lab. Any public comments on that? No, all right, those are all-
There was also a first reading ordinance establishing a housing reserve fund.
Oh, yes, sorry. I have an old agenda from last week. Yes, any public comments on the housing reserve fund? Now we'll move to other public comments.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Joe Edgell. I live at Elman Larch Avenue, and I'm here on behalf of Tacoma Dogs tonight. I actually wrote out some comments for a change. So on July 15th, 2013, nearly three years ago, Tacoma Dogs made its initial presentation to the city council. Each member of the council at the time expressed support for the dog park. About a month later, on August 14th, Tacoma Dogs, city staff and county staff met on the city's preferred site for the dog park, Hefner Park, which is not too far from city hall here. Both city staff and the county staff urged construction on this property because it was owned by the city, wouldn't require any permits, and could be built fast. While Tacoma Dogs expressed concern about topography and the difficulty of construction, we went along with city staff because we were assured, time and again, the park would be built quickly. In November of that year, we met with city manager Kenner, then deputy city manager Ludlow, and other city staff. They assured us again that Hefner Park's site was the best site due to minimal county interaction and the speed with which the park could be constructed. We were told the park would likely be open by the end of the summer 2014, or at the latest, the end of the calendar year. 2014 came and went, no dog park. But city manager Kenner promised it would be open by the end of Tacoma Park's fiscal year in the middle of 2015. As you know, that date came and went, and it was the end of the calendar year of 2015. Now we're nearly halfway through 2016, and we still have not broken ground in the dog park. If the county's to hold up, apply some political pressure and unstick this, or ignore the county and just build it. It's not much they'd do about it. If city staff have other priorities, rearrange those priorities and move the dog park up the list. The city's website promises the end of 2016 for the dog park, over four years, which means another summer with no dog park. No other petition drive in Tacoma Park in recent memory has gathered over 1,300 signatures like the dog park. And this is a city where 25 angry constituents here in the audience can change policy. 1,300 people want this park. It would be great if the community could get an update tonight during council and city manager comments, and it would be great if we could get this park open this spring so it could be used this summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to clarify that when Mr. Edgell refers to Hefner Park for the location of the dog park, he's really talking about the property that is off of Darwin Avenue parking lot, not the other side of the valley on the Ritchie Avenue side and Geneva Avenue where Hefner Park Community Center is. It's the same property, but it's two distinct different locations. Thank you.
All right. And now Ms. Barkley has asked ahead of time for additional time this evening to speak to two issues.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to talk about both the plastic bag ban and the personal property tax for the businesses. I'll start with the plastic bag ban, and the farmer's market is appreciative of the ongoing conversation that we've had with the city regarding this topic, and recognizes that it's an important topic to the city and its residents. While the market's mindful of the impact of plastic bags on the environment, it also recognizes the need to provide customers with ways to carry their purchases. If the ban is enacted, the market requests the following in order to remain competitive with area markets and to support customers who forget their bags when they come to the market. The market's requesting the ability to use compostable handled bags. These are identical to the banned bags that are in question, but are usually imprinted with compostable or biodegradable on them. They're also called T-shirt bags in the industry. The market would like to continue to use their standard produce plastic bags, standard plastic, not compostable for this item. The farmers use multiple sizes. They find that compostable are cloudy in nature, so for any items that they prepackage before they bring to the market, you might find bags of nuts at the market, for example. They're typically in small, clear bags because there's not a compostable equivalent. There are multiple farmers actually already using compostable where it makes sense for them, but from a pure sales standpoint, to show their goods, they need something with the clarity of traditional plastic. So for those, the non-handled bags, they would like to be able to continue to use plastic. The market does not want to charge their customers if that happens to come up as a requirement by council. The market is typically trying to deal with whole numbers. They don't have cash registers at the market, so they're hopeful that the council doesn't try to impose a nickel, a dime, a quarter, a bag price per bag for the compostable bags or other plastic bags. The market is asking for a one-year phase-in for the plastic bag ban. A lot of the farms have a whole year's inventory sitting in their barns to use, and they'd like to try to wear, to use down inventory. The market welcomes any financial support from the city to help vendors transition to the bags. And the market will continue to work to offer bags only on demand to the customers. We continue to encourage customers to bring reusable bags as an alternative, and the market will continue to offer free reusable bags at local events. We've passed out 400 in the past few weeks at both the 5K and the Green Fest for free to the community, so as an incentive to use them at the market. And the market would like to use this opportunity to remind everybody to bring their bags, so it becomes less of an issue if people bring their own reusable bags to the market. The next topic I wanted to talk about was the business personal property tax, discussion that's been taking place. This is an important topic to the Old Tacoma Business Association and its businesses, and we commend Larry Silverman, owner of S&amp;A Beads, who's here tonight, for his ongoing efforts to raise awareness and affect change on this subject. The Tacoma Park personal property tax with its 1.55% tax assessed on 100% of inventory appears to be the highest in the area. Well, we can't definitively say that this actually has deterred new businesses from locating our community, it's possible, but I don't have that to share with you. We are able to confirm that the tax has indeed taken many of our new businesses by surprise when they get that bill at the end of the year, and it's also been a hardship for other businesses to pay after perhaps going through a Christmas or holiday sales that weren't as strong as they had hoped, that they had hoped to be, and they get a double hit. Not only do they have extra inventory than they, that they anticipated at the end of the year, they get hit with this tax on top of additional inventory. So we've not been able to easily obtain a breakdown of the taxes by Tacoma Park Commercial District to understand what the contribution is specifically to the Old Tacoma area. It's all lumped together in one big sum, as you're well aware. Additionally, we've looked at comparisons to surrounding jurisdictions, and those, the, it remains unclear with how exactly we compare to others. There's additional urban district assessments, like in Silver Spring and other municipal variations, that we're not, are not immediately apparent, that when you go out to look at the Maryland tax database, they're not there. So there's a lot to still figure out. So we recognize that this topic, there's a lot to still determine here, but as a community that's known to support its small businesses, we believe it's an important subject, and would like to ask for the city's full support to understand this tax, its relation to other commercial districts, and most importantly, its impact to our financial health of our small businesses. So thanks. And actually, I just want to plug Tacoma Truck Garden, June 4th, everybody, and I hope the community will join us for this fun beer fest food truck event. Thank you.
Yeah, do you want to do it now, or?
I'll do it. Are you going to leave, or are you going to?
I'm not going to stay for the weekend.
Okay, why don't you ask it, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Barkley, can you tell me how much, what was the cost for the 400 bags, or do you know the cost for the 400 bags that were given away?
Well, they just spent, I think, $2,000 to buy 1,500 bags. It's like, their cost is like a dollar fifty a bag plus shipping, and I think they sell them for $2 a bag normally, and then they gave away the 400, so 400 times 200, $800 worth of bags.
So have you looked into, you know, maybe doing a possible OTBA reusable cloth bag giveaway, or?
Not, we've always thought about it, I mean, we have all our gear, so sure, but nothing in the immediate, nothing, no immediate plans at this point.
Could you look into that for us, so that, I mean, you know, you do have a request, annual request of money from the council for OTBA, and I don't want this to be a major issue for the vendors at the market. I mean, if it's not like some huge cost, maybe it's something that we can consider for the money that the council gives to OTBA.
So just buying reusable bags, not-
And you'd just give them away to the vendors at the market for the first year?
Sure, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Larry Silverman. I live on Birch Avenue, and I own S&amp;A Beads on Laurel Avenue. I'd like to speak briefly about the economic development, investments in economic development through contracts or otherwise. In general, I think that the city could play a large role in economic development, but I really doubt that this council is prepared to do anything, and I would urge you not to spend money this year until some changes were made. There are two real items that concern me. One is, I'm not sure the council has asked itself the question, what is the impact of city government on economic development now? What are you doing right and what are you doing wrong? What's working and what's not, and what are the effects? And I base this on the fact that when we first raised the issue of the inventory tax or the personal property tax, there was a lot of blank stares, a lot of things that people didn't know. And I think before you invest in a consultant, you might think seriously about what it is you're doing and what's working and what's not working, is try to think that through in your own minds. Two, what is the purpose of economic development? What I got from some of the meetings, and I haven't attended all, but I tried to pay attention, is that the idea is to, is to get large stores into the New Hampshire Avenue area that would increase the rents, which would in turn increase real estate tax revenue. If that's the goal, and I'm not sure that's worth spending our time on. On the other hand, if the goal is to help the people of Tacoma Park improve their own economic situation, then I think that'd be a really good thing. For example, there are a lot of people, federal workers, others, who have part-time businesses. Maybe they've invested a lot of money in computer software in order to invent a new, a new program. Maybe they're artists or vendors trying to get ahead, looking for lower rent spaces. What would, the economic development you're talking about, would it, would it be directed to people like that, or are we just trying to get more Walgreens? Are we just trying to increase the rents that might discourage economic development from, on the small side? Are we trying to help people improve their own family incomes? I'll tell you, many of our customers and many of our colleagues are doing just that. They have all sorts of jobs, but their dream is to have their own craft shop, or their own art gallery, or their own computer company. And the question is, are you trying to help people realize their dreams, or are you putting obstacles in the way of their dreams? And I think, I think the answer unfortunately right now is there are more obstacles than help. But I know you'll think this through, and we'll come up with a good solution. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Lovelace, yes?
Yes, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. One thing I want to do is tell you that I'm in full support of the plastic bag ban, because number one, do you know that those plastic bags are made from oil? Do you know that we are trying to stop dependence on oil, both foreign and domestic? Trying to stop fracking? We're trying to stop offshore drilling? We're stop, trying to stop the Keystone Pipeline and other massive destruction of our environment? And the best way to do that right now, Tacoma Park in itself, is we can start the ban on plastic trash bags, you know, the carryout bags, I mean, to start the use of carryout bags. And I don't mean just for one store, I mean for all stores. And I don't want, and the idea of just having a clear plastic bag so you can see what a peanut looks like inside your bag, I don't think that's worth digging up the ground for oil for. Think about what the environment is like and what we're destroying, you know? You know, because it's our planet too. And also, on the, on the 15th of May, on a next Sunday, this coming Sunday, we're having a demonstration in front of the White House to protest the use of fossil fuels, to get away from fossil fuels demonstration, and how we can go about it, but I think we could carry it one step further by getting away from plastic bags, thus curbing the need for oil to begin with. And I thank you people again for using the electric car chargers, putting those out for the public to use, because that's going to, that's going to go a long way towards getting away from fossil fuels. And if we can do that, we can get other cities to do the same thing, other cities to do the same thing, and then I think we'll be coming a long way to banning fossil fuels. Another thing is too, is you guys had a phone number for people who are handicapped or elderly and older, like I am, and other people, to be able to get down to the city events like the, like the Folk Festival, or Jazz Festival, and other festivals. We're trying to get people to be able to come down to those things instead of being left out. Some of us feel like we're almost intentionally weeded out by society, and we don't like that. It's not fair to us. We have a right to participate, we want. We want to have that in our Tacoma Park Charter, the right to participate. It should be given to all people who live in Tacoma Park, in Tacoma Park's events. We should provide transportation if need be, if they want to get there. You should, I hope you guys have a number that we can call if we want to go. And also, that should be used to get to meetings too, because there are other people who want to get to meetings, it's come to my attention a few times, but they don't feel they can do it. And that's why I called in for the call-ins program for our people, and I thank you very much for looking into that. Thank you very much. Keep the peace, and remember to vote responsibly.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Any other public comments this evening?
Mary Jane Machuie again, Ward 2, parents of special needs adults, how's everybody today? I'm here as a representative of my son, my only child, who has Asperger's syndrome and depression, and also the members of my group. I'm also here for, I'm concerned about the lack of diversity, all the, it seems like that my son calls the projects over here are mostly people of color, and the homeowners are mostly white, more and more increasingly wealthy whites because of the high price of homes now in this area, and they're getting higher, and they're being turned into McMansions. And I'm very concerned about this lack of diversity, and economic and racial, and it's to me, it's how can the city succeed as a republic, as we call it, with that, with this happening? We look at other places and condemn them, but we're just the same. And also, I'm still asking if we could have a class for people with developmental disabilities and any other kind of disability, an exercise class for free. We applied for a grant, but they won't allow free. They said it had to be, couldn't, I just asked for four people for free, and they said, no, it had to be eight people for half price. A lot of people can't afford $45 a month, that would be half price. And, and I think it's a shame, a shame that we have to apply for a grant for that. The city should have, they have doodles of classes, the rec department, why can't they have at least one for people? And anybody who attends, any of these classes can attend our class. It's open to everyone. And Mr. Lovelace, you could attend our class too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Julie Lawson, I'm the Director of Trash Free Maryland. I've been before you a couple of times, but I appreciate your comments on regards to the farmer's market. I wanted to report a couple of new things that I learned since, specifically regarding farmer's markets, to make sure that they're incorporated as amendments or any other issues. First, these bag laws generally across the country are applied at point of sale. They don't apply to prepackaged food. And you also see that in the polystyrene foam pack, food packaging ban, that it doesn't apply to egg cartons and meat trays when stuff comes from outside. So anything that's prepackaged is generally left out of these types of ordinances. The idea is we're talking about the consumer's choice when they're buying. Finally, I did talk to the DC Department of Energy and Environment about how they handle the farmer's markets, because as we know, many of the vendors in the Tacoma Park farmer's markets also participate in the many markets in DC. DC doesn't look at the bags that contain raw foods like apples, tomatoes, et cetera, and given that those are done by weight anyway, they're at all sorts of price points, not necessarily whole numbers, but DC very specifically doesn't inspect farmer's markets. DC has a very robust inspection program. They look at more than 1,000 stores a year by secret shopping. They don't go to the farmer's markets. It's their way of, without putting it on the record, exempting them, you might say. So that might be one option. Montgomery County, broadly speaking, does not inspect any of the stores in the county. They do everything by complaint-based compliance and education and outreach to those businesses. So I think that you would have an opportunity in Tacoma Park also to just not inspect and then not enforce at the market as one opportunity here. Just giving a perspective from the region on similar legislation, and those are my comments.
Perfect. Thank you for joining us this evening. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Tanya Decona, Ward 1, Buffalo Avenue. So plastic bag ban, the next generation. Last time when I spoke about this, you know that I am in support of the greatest degree possible of the ban. I am aware of the concerns about the farmer's market vendors, and my reading of the ordinance indicates that they are interested in seeking out some innovative ideas for how to deal with this, so I do have one proposal. Before I go into that, I do want to mention that like the five-cent bag fee being put into effect in Montgomery County, you're always going to have people who object. It's always going to be degrees. People will scream about it now, and then five or 10 years from now, they'll say, didn't we always do this? So it takes time. So to me, this is kind of a question of degree. It takes time for change to happen. So my objective is to, or my hope, is to provide people with the most green possible option. I spend a little time each week working at the back of a thrift shop. I've been doing this for about five years. Boy, has it been insightful. One of the things I can tell you about is that we, is that one of the thrift shops on the other side of town has a bin the size of this podium, this lectern, and in that are all the bags that people bring, nice clean bags, they haven't had chicken in them, and anyway, we don't have to go into that, because I know people will have objections there, but my point being, these are bags that are readily available, that you, me, and everybody else has so many of, as I've mentioned before, and they're just donated, they come and they go, someone brings one, someone takes one. That's an innovative idea for a way that they could be available for those individuals who are not as fussy. Now, for the individuals who are more fussy and are concerned about having a brand spanking new virgin plastic- Now, for the individuals who are more fussy and are concerned about having a brand spanking new virgin plastic bag. Alright, so a couple of options there would be, if, if we were to source this from some industry organization that has a bag, like imperfect bags. You know, they have lettering that's a little off or something like that. That would be a way to not waste virgin plastic bags that have already been made. But, and it would give them a break and you could talk about the tax break, yes, no. But it, maybe they would even contribute them and give them to the farmers market. So that's a thought about using a, a source of that type. And then the second point there is that, soon as I get my head together, mm, the bump, I know. Oh, I'm waiting for that thing to go off. Is to display the bags in a place where not going to be obvious. So I wonder if rather than the vendors having them up here, where you see like fifty of them on a ring and you just rip one off, what if they were down here and they were available as needed on demand? So those are a couple of my suggestions. Tanya Decona, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments this evening? Alright, we will then move on now. Um, I have two proclamations this evening. For the record, one is for Bike to Work Day, which is on Friday, May twentieth. So I hope, uh, people take advantage to, uh, of Bike, the Bike to Work Day in Tacoma Park. The Housing and Community Development Staff is going to be coordinating three Bike to Work pit stops in the city in partnership with local businesses and business associations. I know one of them will be at the gazebo where I plan on being that morning. So I hope people will come out and you can check out the city website, register and find out where the other pit stops are. The other proclamation, um, I actually delivered this weekend on Saturday at our volunteer fair. That was our first volunteer fair we had. It was a terrific day. Many members of the community came out and organizations. And at that volunteer fair, I presented a proclamation to the Snow Angels in appreciation for all their work. I'll just remind folks that in the aftermath of the historic, historic snowstorm that dropped eighteen point five inches of snow over thirty-six hours here in Tacoma Park, the Snow Angels cleared sidewalks, driveways and paths of more than eighty-four homes, enabling residents to enter and exit their, exit their homes safely. The Snow Angels have been part of, um, working with Lifelong Tacoma since 2014. They comprise mostly Difference Makers, which is a club at the Tacoma Park Middle School. And I just want to thank all the middle schoolers, high school students, Mr. Garing who runs the program. And the, it's just expanding each year, Tacoma Adventist Church, Washington Adventist University and Blair High School have gotten involved. So I'm looking forward to see what happens next year with this program. So we have, uh, those two proclamations. Now I'll turn to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind residents that on May twentieth at twelve forty-five, there will be a groundbreaking on Washington Adventist University's campus for their, a new building that their Health Professions and Wellness Center that they're going to build on Maplewood. So if you have the opportunity, please come out. Uh, the location for the groundbreaking will be the Health Science Building. And the best way to access it is from Maplewood. And I'd also like to thank everyone from Montgomery County Collaboration Council who are behind the ACE Academy for coming out tonight and giving us a presentation on all the good work that they have been doing at Essex House. I appreciate you guys making the time to talk to me and my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
We had a very successful community coffee Friday, um, in Ward Six at the shopping center where the Chuck E. Cheese is and the Smile Dental. And the Starbucks, so you would know which one of that shopping center is. Uh, at the little, well, not so little restaurant, Papoosar, Papoosaria El Comalito, did I say it right? Wow. And I haven't even, I haven't even started my Spanish lessons. Uh, we had a nice turnout, a very, um, interesting set of issues arose because it's all spontaneous when you sit down with folks, um, over coffee and pupusas. You don't know exactly who's going to show up or, and you have less idea even of what's on their minds. Which is the beauty of the whole thing. Because it's just like old time sitting around the luncheonette. People just conversing with each other among equals. The fact that the mayor's there, I'm there, doesn't make any difference. People talk about what's on their mind, not my mind, for example. And so it was delightful. I think we, we were there for well over an hour. And, um, I really cannot wait until we have the next go around on that, which will probably be six months from now since there's six wards. And I want to thank the mayor for inventing this idea. I have to admit that I thought, well, gosh. But I'm convinced it's a good thing.
Wait, did we get it done on tape?
Hey, it better be on tape. That's why I spend so much time talking. Again, that the, I want to remind folks in the New Hampshire Gardens and Ward Six, uh, all, all of the residents there, uh, about the June first city council meeting. When I brought it up at the New Hampshire Gardens Citizens Association meeting last Thursday at the rec center where we had a good turnout, there were gasps that we were actually doing this. Something, and we're, and, uh, this will be kind of the, the guinea pig experiment to see how well it works. And of course, the reason we're doing it is, uh, not for our convenience, but for the convenience of residents. With a dear hope that this will encourage folks to come. Either just, just to come in, sit and observe, or to feel free to speak during the public comment period. And maybe learn a little bit about how we actually do things if they have an otherwise attended a city council meeting. So I think it's a great proposition and I'm really excited about it. And so we're, folks, I think people that were in that meeting sort of felt like we're, we're, this helps us feel like we're part of the city. Because there's a lot of folks in Ward Six that sometimes tell me, you know, we're, we're just not really part of the city, which is unfortunate. And I also wanted to respond to, uh, Mr. Silverman. You asked a lot of sort of rhetorical questions about what economic development is all about. What's good about it, what's bad about it. And what I'm not going to respond to that tonight. But I will send you, uh, an email giving you my interpretation to answer those questions and give you some additional information about where I'm coming from and where I think I can speaks generally for the, for the city about our ideas as to what will be the benefits of, of economic. You, you ask good questions and I appreciate your coming here. So thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, Mayor. It's possible that the, um, city manager might mention this, but I just wanted to mention that, um, this past weekend, there was a, an opportunity to, uh, that a number of neighbors helped out on. I got to be there for part of the time myself. You may have noticed at the bottom of Grant Avenue, there's what's called a berm there, which also has a spot for capturing runoff. And it's been called the beautifully landscaped berm, BLB. And Wayne Sherwood, who's a longtime resident and activist and lives on Grant not far from there, is kind of the, one of the godfathers of it. And Mike Welsh, the city gardener, and his crew have played an instrumental part in it. And so there's a little sign honoring, um, Wayne there and, and his vision for it. And it looks really great. And I think when the trees get a little bit bigger, it's going to create this really nice, not that they don't want to kind of look at the community center when they live over there, but I think they might, they might want to have a nice, uh, set of vegetation to look through it. And, um, my job was just the wheelbarrow and the mulch. And as I said to somebody, they kept me away from the fine motor skill jobs and I think it worked out well. The good thing is though, Mike Welsh mentioned, a similar thing is going to take place this Saturday at that open land at the corner of Holly and Dogwood, which the city now owns. And it's not anywhere near in as good shape as the BLB is. But it's, that will hopefully be a future thing. So that's right down the street from my house, so I kind of have to show up at that. But anyone who's watching, um, or sees it on tape, as, as my colleague said, that's ten to two or so this Saturday at the intersection of Holly and Dogwood. Thanks.
Thank you. Apologies that I have a number of, uh, updates and announcements this evening. First, I just want to, um, say that last week when I was thanking everyone for wonderful Green Fest and the five K, I omitted the Housing and Community Development Department. And I, that was an oversight on my part. And I just want to rectify that tonight by saying thank you to the staff who basically are volunteering their time, um, for that Sunday, particularly being out there in the rain. And so I just want to say thank you to all of them for doing that. Also to let folks know that on Monday, uh, Councilmember Smith and I will be attending an affordable housing conference on, in Montgomery County. We're doing a lot of thinking on affordable housing and we're looking forward to our June first council meeting when we'll really start digging into this issue. Speaking of our June first meeting, um, again, it is at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. So anybody who shows up here, you have been forewarned, go to the New Hampshire Avenue, uh, Avenue Rec Center. I'd also like to say that June is Immigrant Heritage Month, um, across the country. We will be having a proclamation on June first to kick off the month, uh, here in the city. And I know my colleague, Councilmember Koreshi, has been doing a lot of work in this area and speaking to this issue. And I think it's important that at our June first meeting, we want, once again, reiterate our commitment to being a welcoming community to all people and particularly to immigrants who live in our community. Mark your calendars, on June eighteenth, we will have our second community conversation on youth success. We've had a couple of planning meetings, uh, and I think our last one was our most successful. We were joined by four young people who were, five, yes, five, you're right. Five young people who are very excited and brought a lot of energy and terrific ideas to the planning for this event. So mark your calendars for June eighteenth. And then the other thing I want to tell people about is that the last week, starting on May thirtieth through June third, we are going to be visited by the Tiny Lab. It is a touring tiny home. The TV and film personalities Corbett and Grace Lunsford are going on a twenty-city, uh, tour about showing off their tiny lab on energy efficiency and improvements that you can make to your home. They will be located at the city lot next to, uh, the co-op. From May thirtieth to June third, there will be tours and workshops. And so I think, is it on the website yet or should be, not, might not be yet because this is hot off the presses. So, uh, our Gina Mathias, our sustainability manager, is coordinating all that. So make sure that week of May thirtieth, you check out the Tiny Lab. I think that's it for me. Okay, now we will go to city manager's comments.
Uh, thank you. Got to just do two follow-up questions from last council meeting. There was a question, and I think a couple of councilmembers kind of made some statements about, um, can the city plant trees on private property? And yes, we can. I know we had done it before, so I was surprised with the question, but yes, um, we, it is legally permissible for us to do so. The other question was, would any public property be affected by WSSC work along Little Eastern? And, uh, there will be work on Little Eastern itself, which is a public, um, city road. And there may also be access and connection work for the sewer associated with the work. For the block with residents who agreed to grinder pumps, there will be a sewer line in the street, which also would be on public right-of-way. So we do have, um, some perhaps leverage or perhaps under, you know, a role in that, in that portion of the project. Wanted to, uh, share some information. The, um, while both the emergency manager and I were away, we had the big lockdown with the Montgomery County shooting incident. I was very pleased that staff handled this very well. The, both the community center and the rec center went on lockdown. We were kept informed, um, at all times from the police department through some of the inside knowledge that they had. And we also, um, despite being on lockdown, were very receptive to the students from nearby schools to make sure that they could come into the building. So we were, I thought, handled it well. We are going to be doing a, um, kind of a review of that. We did get some good suggestions at the end of it to make it, hopefully we don't have to do it again, but at least to know what it takes to close the building and have the right kind of signs up and that kind of thing. Um, and, uh, yeah, we told the emergency manager he can't go on vacation. And I was stuck in an accident, uh, behind an accident on I-95, so I was, I could watch my phone. One of the things that may or may not be exciting is that on May eighteenth, you will have different agenda cover sheets for your, um, agenda packets. You can already see them, uh, online as part of the items posted for next week. We have included the environmental impact section on that cover sheet. Most importantly, however, um, the way that it is laid out is ADA compliant for web posting and it works better for web posting. So, um, we're very happy about that. If somebody does make some suggestions, we're not open to, um, I mean, we are open to changes. If we need to tweak and make some of those changes. It is Police Week, um, so we've got a couple of police department items. We've continued to be working on the police department mutual aid agreements, making good progress, um, with the Metropolitan Police of Washington DC. We are still working on, um, trying to get a good agreement with the Prince George's County government. And we will perhaps ask for your assistance on that. I don't think we're quite ready for asking for assistance on that, but we're close. Just an update that, um, the homicide that occurred on April twenty-seventh, it takes a long time for lab results to come back on some of the things. And I just wanted to let you know that, uh, quite a lot of information has come back that we are investigating. So that continues to be underway. We have a decrease in burglaries, we think because some of the people that have perhaps been involved have been locked up. And, uh, it is National Police Week. A number of our officers, um, and particularly our honor guard has, um, shown up at a number of different ceremonies around the area. On a different note, Tacoma Park Library is on the DC Public Library Bike Tour. So what the heck, go across the line. Um, I was pleased to hear that. I did put a kudo to Mike Welsh, Wayne Sherwood, and I saw the picture with Peter Kovar in it.
I didn't see the picture.
You didn't see, oh, it's a great picture. I'll go forward it to you. Cleaning up the berm, uh, back here, one of the comments on one of the many postings about it was that it was actually useful that it rained so much because the weeds were easier to pull up. So, I'm not sure. And I'm also extending kudos to Keith Kozloff, Katerina Malceva and Colleen Clay, other volunteers for their help in coordinating the volunteer fair at Piney Branch last Saturday. In response to two other questions, there was a question about the dog park status. It's continuing in the process. Some parts are moving faster than others. And if there's a need to do some push, if we feel it, it's not being moved correctly, we will do that. The other thing, just to make sure people know, is that this Saturday, it's Celebrate Tacoma Park out on Maple Avenue from four to seven. And I'm not going to guarantee there's no rain, but it's time, so to have a good time. And, uh, we've got a nice planning group. I think it'll be a terrific, um, a terrific time to be out and join the community. So, that's it. Great. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, there's one big thing I'm going to, to share. And I will be, um, adding this to the information, uh, that goes on the website with the city manager report. And it's update on Carroll Avenue Bridge. So, um, the, yeah, the contractor is currently performing, uh, repair on the existing arches. And so when the park, Psycho Creek Parkway is closed on Sundays, that's when they're doing that work. The installation of the pedestrian bridge is underway. I saw a lot of the parts of it today. So the pathways and lighting that go up to it are also being prepared. Also, the construction of the demolition shield underneath the bridge is being done. The detour signal work is nearly complete. We can expect the signals to be active before the actual detour starts. State Highway wants the commuting public to be aware of the traffic signals before the detour route is live, and so they will blink for a period of days before they go to be a regular traffic signal. All of the SHA detour notice and signs are in place, they are covered. Additional signage that the city has agreed to install is currently being completed, will be installed during the last week of May. The signs also will be covered until it's time to open. The construction of the new sidewalk along Cycle Creek Parkway between Old Carroll and Jackson is expected to start very shortly, and the work is being done by the city and contractor. We feel that we've had good responsiveness from SHA on tweaks to the plan as they've come up, and we appreciate the construction managers for helping and accommodating the Tacoma Park 5K race route through their site. The contractor expects to close the bridge to vehicle traffic on June 13th. The pedestrian restriction may be sooner, but they are putting the pedestrian bridge up. Of course, there's possible delays to weather. There's also some utility work that's not been completed. So it may have an effect on the closure date, but SHA would like to try to say that June 13th is the day when it closes. With regard to the initial report of the need to perform nighttime demolition, SHA at this time and the contractor are reevaluating the proposed nighttime demolition and may decide not to pursue it. The benefits included longer work hours and less traffic. However, it's difficult to work at night, and the impacts of noise on the surrounding populations would be significant. When the demolition portion of the bridge over Cycle Creek Parkway is done, it will require the closure of the parkway in addition to the closure of the bridge. And the detour route for that situation will be the same one that was used when they were delivering the beans. Will include Old Carroll, Carroll, Lincoln, and Maple Avenue. So have this information, it'll be on the project implementation page, but it'll also be on the City Manager Report.
Could you tweet it out and put it on Facebook?
We'll get, we'll get out the information.
Okay, good. One other question, is it possible we can put some signs on Maplewood that say, no construction, vehicles can park?
Right, we're gonna be taking care of that.
All right, thank you.
Do we know the demolition phase, how long that's going to take? Is that like a few days, a few weeks?
Before, they had said four days at different, you know, not all at once. So I'm not sure if that's still what they're thinking.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Now we'll move on to-
One question for Suzy.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, Suzy, I checked the State Highway Administration's website for the project over the weekend, and the site had not been updated since March. And if you could ask them to, to provide timely information on their site as well as ours, that would be great. I appreciate that the city is doing it and updating ours.
Will do. Great. All right. Terrific. Now we'll move on to our first item on our agenda, which is an update on the 21st Century Community Learning Center at Essex House. Just to provide some background, in early 2015, the Montgomery County Collaboration Council was awarded a three-year 21st Century Community Learning Center grant from Maryland State Department of Education. It's to provide after-school program for children as well as parent engagement. And Essex House was selected as one of two locations, which we're very happy about. And the programming was originally supposed to be offered Monday through Thursday during the academic year. Grant funding was allocated proportionately. And when we met, Councilmember Smith met with members of the Montgomery County Collaboration Council, and then brought it back to our attention that the residents of Essex House would like this program to run all week, Monday through Friday. The council was able to extend a grant to the program, which we were very thankful for. So I will turn it over to you now to tell us about it.
I will. Good evening. My name is Lynn Sobolov, and I'm with the Montgomery County Collaboration Council. And I'm here to, first of all, thank you on behalf of our organization for your support of this wonderful program at Essex House. We have our evaluator here who will give you an overview of how the program has been going from that perspective. And we also have a parent and a couple of participants in the program that would like to just say a few words afterward. So I also wanted to let you know that we are planning on partnering this summer for Lunch and Learn. We were able to provide some additional resources that we had to expand that so that 40 more students would be able to attend. So I will turn this over now to Jana Sharp, our evaluator.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to lower this a little. I'm a little evaluate.
Yeah, you can actually, on the left-hand side, you can lower the whole desk a little bit.
Oh, this is okay. And I'm sorry, just to change slides, how would I do that? Or would I, excuse me, sorry. Ah, great, thank you. Yes, that's fine, thank you. Thank you again. So my name is Jana Sharp, and I run a Montgomery County-based evaluation firm called Sharp Insight. And one of the programs we have the privilege to support is the African Arts Culture and Education, or ACE Academy, as the mayor described. And this is funded by the Maryland State Department of Education. Locally here, it is coordinated, the lead partner, as you know, is the Montgomery County Collaboration Council. But we also have, there are additional partners, which include the African Immigrant and Refugee Fund, Carpe Diem Arts, Community Preservation and Development Corps, Montgomery County Public Schools, and Weston Educational Consulting Group. And again, obviously, the City of Tacoma Park to support the Friday afternoon programming. So what I wanted to do tonight is to share an overview of the ACE Academy, talk through who we're serving in that program and what we are measuring, specifically enrollment and attendance, the student academic and social emotional data, the outcomes there, as well as the, the parent data. And one thing to note is this is considered still baseline data, because the program has really only been in effect for a few months. So once again, the ACE Academy supports children and families of African descent in the Tacoma Park community by positively influencing elementary school students through quality after-school programs. It's specifically geared toward first to fifth graders. And again, it is both at Essex House as well as Tacoma Park. Excuse me, yes, Park Montgomery. Thank you. So a typical day, the students arrive between 4:00 and 4:30. They get some homework support during that time, and they're provided with some healthy snacks. They have then one hour of academic support time, which is specifically geared toward reading, increasing literacy levels. And then that last hour is focused on enrichment, which can range from music, dance, West African drumming, ukulele, and traditional crafts. So specifically gearing toward the Friday programming piece, the piece that, that your council here provides funding for, is this additional day. During that day, on Fridays, the programs are facilitated by staff members from AIRF. And again, this, this funding allows for five days or consistent after-school programming. You know, for parents who are looking for support, four days a week is honestly just not as helpful as five. And it also allows an opportunity to really be immersed in the cultural enrichment program. The Maryland State Department of Education has very strict requirements around the number of minutes in their program that are really structured toward academics. And on this Friday piece, they're really allowed to engage in more group bonding and learn more about their own culture. So in terms of who we're serving, there have been 71 days offered so far in the program. 27 unique participants have been reached. A few have, you know, been added and, and have left the program. Most notably, a few left prior to that fifth day of programming because, once again, parents needed five days a week. There are currently 19 students in the program at Essex House. Just under half are English language learners, and just under two-thirds of the parents speak a primary language other than English. If you look here on our map, you'll see that at the community at Essex House, the participants were born in six different countries. For you math fans out there, the number rounds up slightly over 100. That is just a rounding issue. In terms of who we're serving at Essex House, again, as we mentioned, the, I'm not quite sure why the, the numbers didn't come in. I'm sorry, that might be a PowerPoint issue. But they range from first to fifth grade, and you'll see each dot actually represents one, one student. With respect to the family demographic data, 82% of the students qualify for free and reduced meals, and just under a third of the students live in single-parent households. We look at a variety of different elements when we evaluate the program overall, and these are represented by these different silos. Obviously, we want to look at program quality data, which specifically tonight, you'll get a snapshot of the attendance and demographics. We also look at their reading achievement and how that changes over this three-year period, their social emotional skills, as well as parent engagement, measured both by self-efficacy surveys, or their own confidence and their ability to support their children and their academics, as well as their attendance and events. We do want to see that their, that the parents are showing up as well to the programs. And thank you so much for coming out tonight. So in terms of attendance, we have 80% attendance rate, which is a very strong rate for after-school programs. Slightly less, 69% Friday attendance. But if you notice, that's primarily in December and January, and that's pretty much evening out as the students have become familiar, you know, with the, with the additional day. We are also looking at their grades and their reading scores. Again, grades specifically related to their reading grades. And what we are looking at here, we use an evidence-based program called Voyager, which divides the students into small groups. It's customized. It addresses their own reading level, so it's a small, small group programming. But we will provide a presentation that has the actual values here. I apologize. It must be a technical glitch, but we'll make sure that you have the, the full, the full slides. 89% of the students are emerging or on track with respect to the reading levels. We reached our first milestone, which was set at 55%. So our students are really, are doing, are doing very well. With respect to the social emotional skills, we use a, another evidence-based tool that child, it comes out of a group called Child Trends, which is a firm in DC. And we look at a number of social emotional skills, five in particular. We look at students and teacher measurements of self-control, academic self-efficacy, or the students' confidence and their ability to academically succeed, persistence, mastery orientation, and social competence. A question previously was raised as to what mastery orientation is, and that's the orientation of a student to go after a task until they have mastered it, for the benefit of mastering it rather than someone's external praise, et cetera. So to better understand what these tools look like, this is a snapshot of, of the tool itself. So certain sample questions include, I can wait in line patiently, I sit still when I'm supposed to, I can wait for my turn to talk in class. And they have to, the students have to identify whether that's not at all like them or a lot like them. And this is also read out loud, again, just to support students at all literacy levels. These, the scores are averaged, and we look at them in different skill levels, low, moderate, and high. Currently, 80% of the students are scoring moderate to high on all measures. And again, that has also exceeded our initial milestone of 50%. And if we break that down further, you'll see how that breaks out. 40% of the students scored high on all of the measures. 40% had a combination of moderate, high, and 20% low, moderate, and high. And this level of data really does allow us to, or to work with the students who have, who, you know, we can identify as meeting scores in certain, support in certain areas. With respect to parent engagement, 78% of our parents at Essex House have attended at least one event, which is a great sign. And we also do survey the parents as well. It's a brief one-page survey that asks questions such as, I know how to help my child do well in school. And we look again at that academic, our parental self-efficacy score over time, and the baseline score is a 4.74 out of 6. And so we will be tracking that over time. Some great quotes that we've captured from our initial assessments, my child has changed his or her attitude towards learning. My child was in an ESAL class at school, and his English has improved so much since ACE Academy began that he's no longer in ESAL. That stands for English as a, as a secondary language. And thirdly, I enjoy the extra time I have with my child at home because homework is completed. So again, just as a snapshot, these are the key areas that, that we covered, the overview, the population that we're serving, and our key outcomes. And I'll certainly take any questions and comments, and then we'll introduce Kathy.
Anybody have any questions or comments at this point, or you want to, Councilmember Schultz?
Thanks very much. Interesting. You said in one of the slides that 78% of the parents have attended at least one event. What, how many events are there typically arranged for parents to attend?
That's a great question. So, Kathy, do you want to field that? I'm going to bring Kathy Stroop up, who's our project director, and she, she can help to field that with me, because she might have a better sense. But there are a variety of events that are held throughout the year to engage the parents.
Hi, I'm Kathy Stroop. We've had parent events, potluck dinners, and performances at, one at each site. We've also had a number of parent workshops, like how to help your child succeed in school. We've probably had at least six of those so far, and we've had pretty good turnouts at those. Our next celebration is our big gala celebration. It's going to be on June 17th, on a Friday. This is where both community centers come together at, here at your auditorium. We start at 6 o'clock, we end around 8:30, and you're all invited. And I would love to see you there. The children will be reading poems, playing the ukulele. They're doing a skit. It should be great. And we're having, we're serving finger food, too. So you can come early, you can eat.
It's always a good time.
Councilmember Kovar?
Just one question. Could you switch back to the slide where it showed different countries they were from? You switched off that before I really had a chance to-
No problem.
-see it and say what the different languages are, maybe, if that can be answered?
Ethiopia, Senegal, United States, Cameroon, Eritrea, and, the Congo?
Democratic Republic of Congo.
Of all, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to introduce a parent from Essex House. He's here with his two adorable children. This is Mr. John-
Kaviavu.
Kaviavu, all right. And he's here to talk about Fridays. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is John Kaviavu. I am originally from the Democratic Republic of the Congo, one of the countries that is mentioned over there. And I'm a parent of two beautiful girls right there, who are part of the ACE Academy and Essex House. And I'm here just to, to, I mean, to pretty much represent all the parents who couldn't make it this evening and whose children are part of this after-school program. And I'm just here to kind of thank the city for supporting this program, because this program is very, very helpful for us parents, but more so for our children. And also, we have been- And also, we have been attending, like, last week I attended the parent workshop, and I think it was really, was really, really great. We have learned a lot on how to support our children, so we really hope that there will be more of such opportunities, more of such workshops for us parents. So here, we kind of wanted to, I request that the city keep supporting this program, especially that, I mean, that fifth day, because we, I just got, we got that information last week, that next year it might be just four days instead of five, and that was really, really scary, and we are hoping that the city will consider continuing to support the program in its five-days version, which is really, really very helpful. So I thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah. Could you introduce your daughters to us, since they've been so patient sitting here?
Yes, this is Janice, she's eight years old and seven years old. She'll be turning eight very soon, and is going to Tacoma Park Elementary and first grade. And this is Helena, 15.
Five.
She's pretty gay at Tacoma. Kid of God.
Lot of pressure, Dad, lot of pressure. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much, girls, for coming tonight, we appreciate it. Councilmember Schultz, you have another question?
Yeah, just one last question, I mean, just want you to know, I'm very much supportive of what we're trying to do here, what we're doing. Going into the next time, next session, next year, with parents knowing that it'll be a five-day program, what do you think would be, well, two things, the likely level of enrollment, since it was kind of shortened this year because of special circumstances, and what do you think is your actual capacity?
I think because of the space available, really, our capacity is 25, and that's for safety issues. But we started in the middle of the year, and people may have already made some plans, and I think that's part of the reason that we have a lower enrollment than we could have. But going into next year, our hope is that we may apply for a larger community impact grant, and that might support that fifth day. I think it will make a big difference to participation for parents for next year.
Catherine Smith, is there something else?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much.
Thanks again for everyone coming out, I really appreciate it. Can you just mention why you don't cover math or science in the after-school program?
When we first convened partners together, we included principals from the surrounding schools, and we asked them, "What is your focus area of concern for the students if we're having a robust academic program?" And they indicated literacy was especially important. Now, that's not to say we couldn't address math, we certainly are through Lunch and Learn this summer, and perhaps in a future proposal, that is something that we can add. There are other opportunities where we don't currently have plans to operate, for example, early dismissal days, holidays from school, where parents may still be working and children may need things to do, and there would be plenty of opportunities to add those elements in.
Well, you know, I mean, this is a great program, I've been very supportive. I hope that we can continue this relationship, and look at ways we can expand this to other buildings in the city, maybe through future grants, through the 21st Century Grant Program. But you guys are doing an excellent job, and I hope the city will continue to be a partner.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you all, and thank you for staying so late this evening, and I just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said, I had the opportunity to spend an afternoon with you all, and it was terrific, and I very much look forward to June 17th and seeing everyone again, so thank you so much, have a nice evening. All right, we will, we will move on now to our voting session. The first is a first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2017 tax rate, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. Well, this is exciting, to vote on this. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2017 has been considered by the council over the last month. I presented my proposed budget on April 6th, we had public hearings on April 13th and April 27th. The proposed budget was prepared on the, with the focus of the established priorities of the city council, and the discussions about the items in work session also focused on those priorities. And the priorities are: livable community for all, fiscally sustainable government, environmentally sustainable community, engaged, responsive, and service-oriented government, and advanced economic development efforts. With the adoption of the budget, the city's real property tax rate will be set at $0.56.75 per $100 of assessed value. This is less than the fiscal year 2016, the current year rate of $0.58.5. The rate exceeds the constant yield tax rate of $0.55.18, as calculated by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation. The rate will lead to an increase in expected real property tax revenue of $345,000 when compared to this current year, and that's taking into account the $200,000 that we're not, that we're kind of not sure of because of assessment appeals. The changes that have been made to the proposed budget by the council are this reduction in the proposed tax rate of $0.175 to the number of $0.56.75 per $100 of assessed value. We had a net decrease of $580,000 in expenditures for bonding for the Ethan Allen and Flower Avenue projects. We allocated additional funds for economic development initiatives, creation of a housing reserve of $400,000 for housing initiatives, shifting of funds from the exterior home repair program to the housing reserve and to sustainability efforts, additional funds for the Tacoma Park Folk Festival, funds to create a City of Tacoma Park College Scholarship, additional funds for playdays, shifting of funds from the Community Grants Program to the new Community Partnership Program, additional funds for increased multimedia lab hours, elimination of funds for the community survey, additional capital expenditure listed for the Old Town Decorative Streetlight Repair, and the reduction in funds required for health insurance premiums, because we got a better rate. Attached to this package, and the items that you'd be voting on tonight at first reading and then next Wednesday at second reading, are the ordinance adopting the tax rate, you have to go into session as the Stormwater Management Board for the ordinance adopting the Stormwater Management Budget, and the ordinance adopting the FY 2017 budget. I've also prepared here for this, in consideration, for your consideration, an ordinance to establish the housing reserve. How you will decide to spend it still needs to be done, but it does now establish this as a reserve that would carry over across years. The items that are before you list the fiscal impact of all of these items, and I was pleased with the process, and we have a package before you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask anyone if they will move this ordinance, any clarifying questions for the city manager? No? Hearing none, all right, who would like to move?
So move.
Councilmember Smith, second. Councilmember Siemens, any discussion?
This is for the tax rate.
Yeah, this is for the tax rate, yeah. Any questions, discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any? Councilmember Mayo, that wasn't opposed?
It was.
Yeah, okay, so six ayes and one opposed, nays, I guess, all right. Next, now, we need to move a motion to convene as the Stormwater Management Board, will someone move that motion?
So move.
Councilmember Smith, we have second. Councilmember Schultz, second. All those in favor of moving to the Stormwater Management Board, say aye. Any opposed? No, all right, we are now sitting as the Stormwater Management Board, and we have the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2017 Stormwater Management Budget. City manager have any comments on this one, or?
No, but I just see a typo, so that'll be fixed.
Okay, we'll fix the typo. Any, before I ask someone to move this ordinance, any questions for the city manager? No, all right, who would like to move the ordinance adopting the FY 2017 Stormwater Management Budget? Councilmember Schultz moves, second. Councilmember Smith, second. Any questions or discussion of this? All those in favor of the ordinance adopting the FY 2017 Stormwater Management Budget, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Excuse me. Mooze, moving on to the next item, is there, first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2017 Budget, in terms of the city manager, any other comments? Any questions regarding the FY 2017 Budget? Would someone like to please move the ordinance?
So move.
Councilmember Smith moved, Councilmember Koreshi, second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo, go ahead.
Yeah, just one question, one confirmation, I had earlier asked the city manager to, before the budget is finalized, provide or add to it a written summary about the intent and the sort of, the pattern of financing the five-year bond proposal, so I just wanted to confirm that that would make it into the final draft of the document.
Yes, I'm sorry, it was not here.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the ordinance adopting the FY 2017 Budget, please say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
No, all right, moving on now to the first reading ordinance establishing a housing reserve fund.
Why don't I just go ahead and mention this? In order to establish a reserve, an ordinance is required by the Tacoma Park City Charter, and so this is, identifies that the council desires to create a housing reserve to provide funds for efforts to meet council goals related to housing, and whereas the fiscal year 2017 budget includes an initial funding contribution of $400,000 to the housing reserve, then it would read, now therefore be it ordained by the council, that there shall be established a separate reserve for use in efforts to meet council goals related to housing. And each year's budget shall include the amount of unreserved fund balance to be transferred to the housing reserve. The council shall enact by ordinance such additional criteria and procedures as are necessary to operate the housing reserve.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, the city manager on this one? No, who would like to move it?
So move.
This one to Councilmember Kovar, and second by Councilmember Smith. Any other questions or discussion on this? No, all right, all those in favor of establishing a housing reserve fund, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All those in favor, moved unanimously, so, and I just want to take a moment and just enjoy. Because I think we established this as a priority, as a new council coming in, we had our community conversation in February, and we are moving forward on this issue, and I'm looking forward to our Housing Department coming back to us and talking to us on June 1st, so I just want to take a moment. All right, next reading, next voting item is a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of equipment for the multimedia lab. Anything on?
I don't know that there's a lot to say about it, there's $45,000 from the cable grant funds for various updated equipment.
All right.
Would you like to move it?
All right, Councilmember Siemens moves it, and second.
Second.
Councilmember Smith, second. Any questions on this? Councilmember Schultz, you have?
Just a comment that we are just simply allocating money, just the money we're spending is an allocation of money that we have already in our budget.
That's right.
From, in the cable equipment reserve, which is a very large amount of money, so this is not new money that we're, that's coming out of.
This was planned to be upgraded, it was in the budget, and it does come from the cable, capital cable grant funds.
I just wanted to make sure residents understand that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, this is a single reading ordinance, I can do, do you need to call roll? Yeah, got it.
Okay. Calling the roll, Councilmember Koreshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar.
Yes.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
All right, those will be our voting session for this evening. Now we'll work, move on to our work session, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Schultz to report out on the April 15th By County Tacoma Langley Crossroads Walking Tour, and I see Ms. Isis has joined us, and I just want to say thank you for coming back this evening, and our apologies that our reconciliation conversation went a little long last week, so thank you very much. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. On April 15th, I helped, I organized with the help of Melanie Isis, who's here tonight, will be at the podium shortly, to organize a walking tour of the crossroads area of Tacoma, the city of Tacoma Park and Langley Park. So it includes basically the four major corners at the intersection of University Boulevard and New Hampshire Avenue. I've prepared a handout for my colleagues. The one thing I want to mention out loud here is that, basically, for the purposes of the walking tour, we were looking, considering, or defining the crossroads as an area that would include pretty much the eight largest commercial land holdings in the crossroads area, including the 7676 Crossroads Professional Building, the Econo Lodge Quality Inn IHOP property, Hampshire Place, the JBG Holdings of about 9.8 acres, Langley Park Plaza, which is northeast corner of the big intersection, including the CVS, McDonald's, Atlantic Supermarket, and Regency Furniture, the Langley Park Center, which is on the other corner, including the Woodlands Restaurant and Bank of America, the new, about to open Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Transit Center, which is owned by the state of Maryland, and the Hampshire-Langley Shopping Center, which includes Sardi's Restaurant, Chuck E. Cheese, Starbucks, and some other well-known businesses. The idea basically behind this was to, was a pretty much a familiarization tour. In talking to Prince George's County and Montgomery County planners, it became apparent to me that a lot of the professional staff really did not have, and they candidly admitted this, a very accurate understanding of the areas on the other side of the boundary line with, Prince George's, Montgomery County boundary line runs down University Boulevard, in case, in case you're not aware. So, and in the case of some of the Prince George's County professional planning staff, they also admitted that frankly, they did not have a very good understanding of even their own side of the Langley Park commercial area. Partly, it's good to understand that that area is not incorporated, it's an unincorporated area of Prince George's County, so there's no local government. There are programs in that area that are more or less directed towards social issues. So it's sort of, the outcome is that we have a very large, vibrant business community on all four corners, and Ms. Isis can talk to us about that, but there is no common voice to this business area to articulate its needs, and from an economic point of view, we can disregard the political boundary line, because it is a shop- it's, it is a shopping, it's a super large shopping center made up of smaller shopping centers, plus a lot of little, I mean, just scores of small businesses. And there's, there isn't, there's no centrality to the area. There's no common voice. And yet we have the purple line that is going to begin construction this fall. And it's going to be coming. We know that now for a virtual certainty. And we, I think, my impression has been, we don't really have an understanding of what that might be, what the consequences might be. And if I don't have an understanding of it, then I know that a lot of the property owners don't, and most of the small business owners do not. The walking tour basically then covered those, those four quadrants of it. And it involved a group of people, let's see if I can find my, this is not what I want. Here's what I want. Of, from Prince George's County Planning Department, Prince George's County Department of Housing and Community Development, the head of that department, staff from the Montgomery County Planning Department, Ms. Denny Taveras, the Prince George's County Councilmember. Who else? There was, there was probably about 20 to 25 people in this, in this group, including a number of the property owners and property managers of the, of those properties that I mentioned. And for example, we, we talked to Bob, had Bob Hall address the group who manages the the Langley Park Plaza Shopping Center and has done so for a number of years. We talked to a gentleman by the name of Bobby Patel, who was the manager of the Econo Lodge Quality Inn, and heard from him about their occupancy rates. And for example, I was just amazed to learn that the Econo Lodge operates at about 95% occupancy, which in hotel, the lodging industry is absolutely unheard of. I think the Quality Inn operates at about 75% occupancy, which is very high. So things like that were very illuminating. We finally, we talked to the people at the Transit Center, basically talked to us about the progress on that project. It's physically going to be completed, for example, this month, the actual construction. But the actual operations of the Transit Center aren't going to really start until probably three, three months from now. And then that's when we'll begin to see a lot of changes there. So what, what that means is change has already started in the crossroads area. It's simply going to accelerate as the purple line construction moves forward and businesses and shoppers begin to realize that there are, that there are changes. So this walking tour then basically was, and it was also included, Councilmember Siemens and Councilmember Kovar was, was in the walking tour as well. And Mayor Stewart. A whole lot of people that were there. I don't want to take a lot of time going over all the names of the individuals that were there, but it was pretty exciting. The question then comes around, well, what, where is this all going to go? I mean, what do we, is this a one-time sort of shot at that, we've sort of said, oh, well, this was fun, let's do this again sometime? No, it is, there is purpose to it because what we're trying to do here is to form an entity, a community organization that will be business oriented, that will try to pull together all the stakeholders on all four corners of this, the entire commercial district, to bring people together. Because we know that different businesses have different objectives and what they sell and how they do it. Commercial property owners own a lot of property. They're extremely heavily invested in this area. So they've got a real vested interest in the future of this area. And the people that, you know, who live in Tacoma Park and in Langley Park, this is the closest shopping to area to so many people, and particularly in Langley Park, so many people that depend on it. So there is a lot at stake. And what we're hoping to be able to pull together is what I have arbitrarily labeled the Bi-County Crossroads Coordinating Commission. It's a big mouthful. We could probably come up with something shorter than that. But at the, at the present time, that's going to be sort of what we're going to call it. So there's clarity on our purposes. It's not, we're not trying to create a new level of government. We're not trying to create a nonprofit organization. We're simply trying to create a forum that will meet on a regular basis and then be open to the public and all stakeholders. And if anybody is interested in the crossroads and its future, then you can consider yourself a stakeholder. And we have a plan at the present time to try to move forward on that. But first, I want to have Melanie, if I can invite you up to, to, to the lectern here to talk about your, your perspective on where we've come so far and where you hope, we hope to go.
Okay. Should I pour something?
No, you can.
You're on.
All right. Well, good evening, Councilmembers and staff. So Fred has told you very well, kind of the origin of this idea. And the CDA, as you know, is empowered by the city through the ordinance. We've been reauthorized five times and we are authorized through, I think, 2022 or 21. But we can only go so far in terms of trying to transform this Bi-County commercial hub. And it's sort of like New Hampshire Avenue. One half of it is in Prince George's, one half is in Tacoma. As much as you do on the Tacoma side, you're, you're very much tied to what happens on the other side. And we are the same. And so, as Fred said, the shoppers who go to the crossroads don't pay any attention to the geographic boundaries. It is basically large commercial centers that have been there for 50, 60 years that are owned by some major entities. And change is coming. And so the idea of this tour was to show the people that we've been talking to what this Bi-County commercial hub looks like. And with the idea that they would see it and realize that there was a need for this overarching body that had the crossroads as its primary focus. For both Montgomery and Prince George's Counties, this area is an edge, edge communities on both sides. And we're both huge counties, upper Marlboro, Rockville, we're way over on the side of both of them. And there just isn't a lot of focus on this area. Both counties have, you know, growing populations, all kinds of challenges, but they're not really paying attention to this area very much. But with the purple line coming, there's sort of this window, there's no people in positions of decision-making. When the CDA was first formed, it was supposed to be both sides of the intersection. The original 1987 vision was to represent that area. And half of it didn't go along. And that same half is Langley Park. One of those two properties has the same owner who continues to want to go do things sort of his way. And it is the largest property there, that is Langley Park Plaza, the former Toys R Us. 12 acres, a monster property owned by the original family, being transferred to the third generation. But a huge piece of that area. And we would like to get the property owners and elected officials and planners and residents, civics, people who are interested in that area, it is their home, to be involved in this commission. And as, as Councilmember Schultz said, it's a voluntary commission. It's not paid staff. It is, it is a group that has this interest in common. So that's what, background, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Isis, what would be the next step from us?
Well, what we, the city could be very helpful in supporting the, this concept of a Bi-County commission. And I'm calling it in my head, the Crossroads Commission. It's a literative. And we need to get key people on both counties to be, to buy into this commission. So I think that the city could be very helpful in supporting it and encouraging elected officials, key elected officials who share, whose edge, whose territory is the edge communities that both Tacoma Park and Langley Park include, involved and get them behind it and then bring in the other people. We're imagining about 20 people at most. And people could, if they couldn't come, they could send a representative.
And did County Councilmember Taveras indicate whether or not she would support the proposal?
My sense is that she, she was, she would support it. She and I had met last November, December. And we talked about a, the need for, for a Bi-County bid, a structure, kind of different from the commission, but a management structure for that Bi-County area that would oversee things like litter and street furniture and graffiti and, you know, crime and all the kinds of things that bids do, programming, safety, et cetera. And she, she has a background in planning. And she was very interested in that idea and was going to try to get a bill in Annapolis. I'm not sure what, apparently that didn't happen this past session, but they're planning to do it again. But that's a different level of organizing legislation than we're talking about with the commission. The commission could go on forward, whether or not the bid ever happens.
So could we roll the bid into the commission?
Well, the bid would be, I think, kind of complicated. And when I first came to the CDA, it was one of the things I was thinking about. And because the CDA is a commercial management district, it's the early version of the business improvement districts, the 80s version. And we have the power to collect a license fee through the city's authority. And so if a Bi-County bid were to be created, then the other half of the intersection, the Langley Park, Prince George's County, commercial properties in the district would have to get authorized, empowered to collect a license fee, which could be done. I don't know how difficult that would be, but it would require some kind of legislation.
My thinking is, if we could work together.
Yeah.
With Councilmember Taveras, and that is, that she wants to happen and we also want the commission, but maybe she's not as warm to that idea. If we can bring the two together, we can use our resources in Annapolis to help push this idea forward with the representation from her district, we might have a better chance of both parties.
I agree with you. I agree. I think that's a good idea.
All right.
I mean, we're authorized for a few more years, but, I mean, when the purple line comes and redevelopment begins, there will be, it will be even more of an issue.
Let me offer some, some views on it. I mean, there are precedents for doing cross jurisdictional lines. We have it right here with the Main Street Program that Laura Barclay runs.
That's right.
Which goes across the boundary line into the District of Columbia, which is.
Right.
Not, which is a different state, if you want to think of it that way.
But they don't, they don't collect a license fee.
They don't collect a license fee.
That's the really, the key difference between us and a business association is because we have the authority to collect one, we therefore have a budget. And if we didn't, we'd spend most of our time doing development, fundraising.
One of the reasons that the original Bi-County effort collapsed in the mid 80s was that some of the Prince George's County property owners were really adverse to the idea that there was going to be another level of government created, their words. They didn't, they resented and made it publicly known that they didn't want to be paying money to anybody.
Yes.
And they were very much afraid, and this was a long time ago, different political climate, that there would be somebody trying to tell them how to run their shopping centers.
And I think, I think this is still very much the case with Langley Park Plaza. And they are spending a fortune on security. They have private security, they fenced that mammoth property, they have ongoing issues. Yet, yet if, if they were part of something, the whole area could benefit from that. Because what happens now is the Tacoma Park Police push people across the line who won't move, and, and that's it. And they go to the other corner of the shopping center and the problem just moves around. It moves around and it doesn't really go anywhere.
So, so I have been asked, well, where do you think this is all going? What is, is this going to lead to a bid? Is this going to lead to a nonprofit organization being set up sort of similar maybe to the OTBA? Or, or a public-private partnership? And I've basically said, I don't know. Because we can't possibly know. But I do know that we have to begin first to get all the interests groups. To talk to each other. And to begin to feel like there's a, some common identity, which, which we have absolutely nothing of. Yes, there is police department cooperation and things of, of that nature. We have the SHA that is in charge of the, the two major roads that go through there. We have the MTA, which is a state agency that's working on the purple line and the bus. So there's some commonalities. But, but the taxpayers, the businesses, the property owners and the consumers, the shoppers, there's no, there's no sense of community. We've got to start at that level. My only interest is getting that conversation started, regularizing it, helping everybody to get on to the same page. When we do that, we lower the bar of distrust and sort of sense of, you know, you can't trust developers. Or, you know, we don't know who these business owners are, they live out of town, they don't know anything about my neighborhood and things, that kind of thinking. So that everybody understands that there's a lot at stake and there could be benefits across the board by all the stakeholders getting to know each other, trust each other, discussing ideas, agreeing on preferences to see how this area redevelops. And I think, but then the question comes, well, where's it going to go? Well, we don't know, but I don't think we need to know right now. I do think that a bid proposal, quite honestly, is really premature because if it gets into the legislature and you have property owners in Prince George's County going to their congressmen, their delegates and senators and saying, no way are we going to participate in this, then it'll, it won't, it'll die. It won't go anywhere. And we can't have that. We've got to get everybody together first. And I think that's what this crossroads commission, to use your terminology, is going to accomplish over the next year or two. And then we'll see how it evolves. And I think we'll let it evolve organically.
City Manager?
Yeah, I'd just, I'd like to, I mean, one of the things that's always difficult is to get people to show up. And the, to be able to really develop organically, I think it does need to have champions from both sides of the line. So I think that the more effort that we can do to, to get that, we're more likely to have people come. The other thing is that, and we spoke earlier today, having very interesting and useful agendas for the, for the first few meetings so that people see that it's a valuable way to spend their time. I think, you know, that's something that perhaps, you know, we can all work on a little bit and then bring back to the council as, as something to say, this would be something that we can support and really champion. But I, I think that it's. But I, I think that it's going to be very difficult to be successful growing organically if it just comes from the Tacoma Park side.
Yes.
And, you know, that's, so I think we're just going to work a little bit harder on seeing if we can encourage a champion on the other side of the line.
And I think that there, I agree with you about making these conversations interesting, or these meetings, because that's what we talked about this morning. I think there's a great deal of interest, because when we, when Maloney and I, and the Deputy City Manager, Mr. Dan Weber, met with staff in Upper Marlboro, I guess it was in February, we got a very enthusiastic response from the professional staff there. And I think when we get Councilmember Danny Tavares, Councilmember Tom Hucker, and maybe Mr. Leventhal, and some other people from the county involved, it will then really, I, I, what I'm saying is, I think that it will catch fire. We're just trying right now to get it to be a catalyst, to get this thing going. And it's kind of like starting a campfire in the rain. You know, you rub the sticks together, and you try and get a little spark, and then you blow on that, on those embers very gently. You don't blow too hard, because you'll blow it all out. And you just kind of nurture it along until it flames up and really gets going on its own. And I think it'll sustain itself, how big it gets, and what the character it will take. I don't want to, I don't, I'm, that's not my job. I don't have that authority, I don't have that knowledge.
Well, terrific. Thank you so much for coming and reporting out. It seems that there, there's still a lot of things to do. And as a council, I think, will continue. Councilmember Schultz, if you can keep us updated, and then at those points where, as a council, you know, if this is taking staff time, or as you move this along, we can have other discussions regarding.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to further discussions with City Council as, as this thing evolves and emerges. At this point, just having, having this conversation publicly is a step, and having the interest and concern of my colleagues is a really important thing, because I don't want the public to sort of think, oh, it's just Fred Schultz's big deal, because it really needs to be the, the city as a whole, not just one council member, supporting this, this idea.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, now we will move on to our next item, which is the election synchronization update and review of draft charter amendment. And we have our city attorney here, and the city clerk is going to speak to this as well. I'll see you.
Good evening. We, the document we provided, which is a draft of necessary charter amendments, possibly necessary charter amendments, and lots of questions that needed to be answered, and I think rather than going through all the changes, which are essentially the same changes we presented a few weeks ago, I think it's important to explain some of the answers we got. We had a phone conference yesterday with the, with somebody from the State Board of Elections, and from the election software vendor, and somebody from the county board staff was also there. And the, so on ballot unification, that's having Tacoma Park issues and candidates on the state general election ballot. We learned that instant runoff voting is not feasible at this point, so that would be a significant change to our charter that, that we'd have to make, which is, the advisory referendum had included continuation of interest, instant runoff voting, if we were to switch, or if we were going to go for ballot unification, so that's an issue. The state also said they would not register non-citizens, and that we'd have to have, they could register sixteen and seventeen-year-old voters. We'd have to have a separate precinct for Tacoma Park only voters, which was the sixteen, seventeen-year-olds and the non-citizens. We would be able to do same-day, to keep same-day registration, we'd have to do that at the, the Tacoma Park only precinct. On the question of election synchronization, which is changing the date to coincide with the general election, they indicated we'd have to have a separate check-in for Tacoma Park voters, so there essentially would be two, two lines they'd have to go through to, to be able to vote in both elections.
Ken, I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
You were referring to a Tacoma Park precinct, but did you mean an election site? Or do you mean that they would have to define Tacoma Park as its own precinct?
It would be an election site.
Oh, okay.
And early voting would be another issue. Essentially, we'd have, if somebody wanted to vote in the Tacoma Park election, and the general election would have to go to two sites, a county, early voting site, and then to Tacoma Park to, to vote in our election. Some general answers or information we got. One thing, we were concerned about the requirement, the state law, that if we're going to go for ballot unification, we have to have the same deadlines for filling vacancies in office, and it turns out that's a mistake in the state code, and it applies to vacancies in vacant candidacies, I guess, if, if there's a primary, somebody wins a primary and quits, or nobody wins a primary, then there has to be a process for filling the vacant candidate seat or We also learned that we can retain responsibility and authority for counting the votes, so, you know, we can kind of work on our own timeline. We can, if we were to unify the ballot, we could count the Tacoma Park only voters, and add them to the votes from the general election ballot.
Can I interrupt and ask a question?
Yes.
On the previous point about the primaries? We don't have primaries here.
Right.
So, would that just sort of be irrelevant then?
Yes. So, those were the, I guess, the big pieces of information. Jesse, do you have any highlights to add?
Well, I did, I distributed the, the notes that I had shared with you. I, I don't have anything in particular to add, except I think if, if what you were hoping, if what the council was hoping to do is amend the charter this month and next month, and be on the state ballot in 2018, it doesn't seem like there's a clear path to that at this point. There are options for you to consider, and we could certainly answer your questions, but we had a, the, the call, it was a great call, this, we spent about forty-five minutes, maybe even an hour, on the phone. We had the Director of Montgomery County Board of Elections, the Deputy Administrator of the State Board of Elections, and as Ken said, the software, somebody from the contractor. So, it was a, I missed somebody else. Oh, and we had Marilyn, out of the chair of our Board of Elections, was on the call as well, and Ken, and me, and so, you know, I think we had the right people on the phone, and I feel like we got as much information as there is to get right now.
And I just want to ask a follow-up question in what the city clerk sent out. Under the instant runoff voting, it seems to say here that if we went, if, if we went for the combined ballot, we'd have to actually get rid of instant runoff voting. Is that kind of the bottom line?
I think if, for 2018, that's, that's the case. It would, yes.
So, we'd actually have to amend the city charter to remove instant runoff voting?
Correct.
If we went for the combined ballot?
That's the, right now, that's the biggest barrier.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You know, there are advocacy folks working on that very issue, but right now, there's not a, a solution.
Councilmember Mail, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I'd love to jump in if I could. And just sort of backing up and talking about the context, which was when we last met, and I think did some, some sort of show of interest in this, it was, you know, let's see if we can, let's see what we can learn from the state and county board of elections in terms of, you know, the sort of full integration, unification of, of our ballot onto the state and federal ballot, but recognizing we had some other paths forward. And, and I appreciated the chance to meet with, with Jesse and Ken, and the Board, the City Board of Elections. I also spoke to a council member in Ocean City, which I wanted to provide a little bit of detail on, and had a couple of further conversations with some of those folks in California, but the, but sort of like, I guess, I was just repeating what Jesse just said, which is, you know, it's because of, it's really hard to, to find a way forward to, first.
Tim, you're, you're breaking up.
You're breaking up, Tim.
Trying to make that happen, make that full unification happen. What my take is, and, to cook with.
Councilmember Mail, can you, can you hear us? Because you're breaking up a bit.
Oh, yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me? Yeah?
No, you're, you're not coming through very clear.
Okay, let me, can you hear me any better now?
Yep, that's a little bit better.
Okay, just interrupt me again if it's, if it's still bad. I'll try to breathe and say, what I took from the, from talking to the city clerk about this, was that the state is open to trying to help us facilitate a process where we can synchronize our dates, and use the rooms and the buildings that the state election, state campaign election is running, to be able to have a city election on the same dates, and that there was, you know, openness there, and that that, to me, seems like a good opportunity. And so, so that's one question for the clerk, I'm just, just, because of perception, I'll just keep going for a second, which is talking to the council member, council member Mary Knight, from Ocean City, who's now been through three elections where they, they have had a synchronized ballot. The one thing she said was that the reason that they did not, they were pursuing a unified ballot, and then they, then they voted against doing so, was that, was that the early dates that would have required them to essentially, you know, file candidacy and make other changes in terms of the timeline for the Ocean City election was just too much. And her, her statement was, although they had two lines, and the way they run it is they, the people come into the building, they try to get them to go to the Ocean City voting line first, but, but people can do whichever they want. The most recent election, they had turnout of about fifty percent of all voters, that was about twenty-five hundred voters for Ocean City. So, their election turnout went significantly up. And of all the people that voted in the federal state election, and she just rounded it, but she said twenty-five hundred, there were only seven people who voted in the state federal election who didn't also vote in the mayor council election. So, you know, her, her perspective, and she, she was happy to get up there with anyone, was there's, you know, uniform support in, in Ocean City for the change they've made, and they've had three elections, they've all worked seamlessly, and it's been, you know, really effective for voters who just have found, even though they have stand-up, standing in two lines that day, that they have, voters have found it to be a much easier thing. And then the last question, which the city clerk may want to speak to as well, was the sort of some ballot design questions that came up, apparently with Ocean City, where they were just trying to make sure that their, their, their piece of paper, that the ballot was, was clean and simple, and in some ways, designed to, you know, not confuse people, but to look enough like the other, the state federal ballot, that they, that people sort of, they need to completely get rid of that direction.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Koreshi?
Thanks, Mayor. Ken, when you were giving your opening remarks, you talked about, in your conversation with the Board of Elections, on this phone call, they had said that they would allow sixteen to seventeen-year-olds, there would be a prohibition for non-citizens. And then what about felons?
My understanding is that, that law changed in the state
Right.
About a year ago, so the, that would not be an issue.
Okay, that's what I figured, I just, I just, you didn't specifically raise it.
Yes, I had, I did not realize previously that, that, that it was a statewide change at this point.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Just to finish something here that Councilmember Koreshi asked, our stipulation is that we allow felons to vote who have not yet completed their probation, but are literally just simply out of incarceration. But the state law, I'm asking that because I don't know, does that make that distinction, or do they require that people have fully completed all of their obligations that the court requires?
I can't answer that now, I haven't looked at those details, but I can.
Okay. We'll just leave that as a question.
The city clerk can answer.
I can answer it. The Maryland law now reflect, is the same as ours.
Oh, it is.
We're equal, so as long as you're not in prison, you can vote.
The only difference, I guess, is the residency requirement, right?
Well, right, yeah.
Ours is twenty-one days.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Councilman McCover?
Yeah, it sounds like, then, if we co-locate without actually being on the same ballot, that the key items that were, went along with the referendum that was passed in November could be addressed based on what you're describing. In other words, the felon issue is no longer an issue, and the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds and our non-citizens could vote because they'd be getting a separate ballot, right?
Right, they, they would actually have to go to a, or, no, I'm sorry, not, getting the two things done. Yes, they, they could vote at their, at the bowling place designated for their neighborhood, or really, they could go anywhere in the city.
Right. So, those two features, and then we could preserve the automatic runoff and the same-day registration, because again, we wouldn't be co-locating, right? So, of, of the five sort of conditional parts of this that went along with the referendum, it sounds like if we do the, not getting together on the same ballot, but co-locating, so to speak, those get addressed. And so, it strikes me that the main difference would then be, which was not specifically a criteria, a criterion in the, in the referendum, the main difference would be that we wouldn't have the local election, everybody gathering at the same location. So, in other words, in the most recent election, we were all kind of hanging around the municipal center together, and everybody who came to vote, voted there together. So, what we wouldn't have, and, and to me, this, this would be a trade-off worth having, in my opinion, would be, we'd be scattered a little bit, and maybe if you were a mayoral candidate, you'd have to run around to several different locations, and maybe if you were running as a council member for one ward, you might have to go to a couple. Some people maybe would only have to go to one. We wouldn't all be at the same place, and everybody wouldn't all see each other there. Now, that's a nice thing to have, but I think, to me, as a trade-off, to get the synchronization, particularly if we got the same kinds of numbers and the same experience that Ocean City had, we're not the same community, obviously, but I think we have people who are, you know, very focused on elections, if we could do that, and the, the only, at all, to me, loss would be, we wouldn't have that thing where we were all together, and maybe for some of us, that wouldn't be a loss, I don't know, but, but to me, that's a, that's a trade-off worth doing. worth doing. So I, I think this, this makes a lot of sense to go forward on that basis.
And I think for this evening, the decision, as we made a couple of weeks ago, is to decide whether or not to continue pursuing the combined ballot with all the downsides, or continue pursuing synchronizing the dates, just the dates. And for synchronizing the dates, could the city clerk remind us when we need to make a decision on that? It wasn't as rapid, because we don't.
Right, but this year, ideally, as Councilmember Mayor Mail has stated a number of times, it's, it's important to give candidate, potential candidates some, some notice of what's going to happen, so, and it makes all the sense in the world to do it this calendar year.
Yes.
So that for 2017, everything's clear.
Right.
What's going to happen.
Mm-hmm, okay. But we don't, but we don't need to do as much because of the charter amendments, correct?
That's correct.
Right, the, the difference is for unification, we had to, ballot unification, we had to have everything in place 180 days before the primary or something, so, which was totally artificial for our purposes, because we don't have primaries.
Great, so I, I'll just express my opinion, given, thank you for the information provided, the, particularly the fact that we'd have to give off, up instant runoff voting. For me, says that moving forward, at least in the near term, the idea of having a unified ballot is probably not a direction we want to continue pursuing. Again, that's my opinion, but I would like us to continue the conversations on synchronizing our dates, and we can continue to have work sessions on that and get public input and understand what that means.
You wouldn't have a vote?
Yeah, I was going to, I just wanted to tell everyone how I felt first. My viewpoint, and so I don't know if people want to express their viewpoint at this point, or we can go right to a vote of what direction people would like to go into. Any other comments before?
I have one other question, just to clarify, so that the feature that we have in our current elections, where only five or six weeks before the election is the deadline, and, and the official time at which you get declared as a candidate at, at the nominating caucus under the option that we're talking about now, that would still be retained with the same
Yes.
date and framework and so on?
You could make adjustments to that, but
But there would be no specific
We would have to make them for ballot unification.
Right, but there would be no requirement to do that.
Correct.
To, to in any way change that, if, if we chose not to.
Correct.
So this buys us time, if we abandon the unified ballot and just talk about co-location, we have more time?
Yes, but we
Not that much.
We don't want to take too long.
Not a lot, but a wee tad more.
Yes.
Okay, so let's have a vote then. First, let's just vote on all those in favor of, freaking negative, I guess, all those in favor of no longer pursuing the combined ballot, so we would not pursue moving forward with the combined ballot for the next election cycle, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. Any abstaining? None abstaining, all right. So I think, do you unanimous that we will not continue, for the time being, moving forward with the combined ballot for the next election cycle? Just so that we take, let's take another vote on all those in favor of pursuing synchronizing the, the timing, the date of our election. What are we calling that? Just synchronizing the date? Okay, all those in favor of synchronizing the date of our elections with federal and state, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Those are two nays, and the rest were all ayes. Anyone abstaining? No, all right, so we will continue with the synchronization of the elections, okay? The city clerk and the attorney need anything else on that?
That, just, just to be clear, that's to continue the actions
Yes.
That they're working on, that's not the vote that makes the final decision?
Right, exactly, yep, exactly, okay.
Okay.
Terrific, you can stay right there, I think.
Okay.
We have you all night. The next is our discussion of the ordinance, amending our city code to restrict the commercial use of plastic, single-use carryout bags.
Okay, what is presented to you tonight is all the changes that the council voted on making to the last draft of the ordinance, and that includes allowing retailers to use certified compostable plastic bags kind of inside the store for bulk items, allowing, or I'm sorry, exempting the farmer's market from the restriction on the disposable carryout bags, and requiring the council to take another look at the ordinance every two years.
Okay, who wants to start us off this evening? Councilmember Smith?
Well, in case you didn't need a light.
No.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Seaman, I appreciate you coming back and presenting, I think, this very important ordinance for us all. One thing that I would like to see added is that we have the farmer's markets in the city opt in to the ban after one year. I know that's something you and I discussed in the many drafts of this ordinance. The Committee on the Environment sent out a note today, they would like to have the farmer's markets participate in this ordinance, and I think that we should see how we can make that a reality at the point of sale. For bulk items, I don't think, you know, it's necessarily a requirement, you know, if you're going to put a whole bunch of peaches, apples, or whatever in a, in a bag, I would want it to be recyclable, compostable, but at, when you actually come to the cash register to purchase the items, I think you should either use your own bag or a paper bag, so my colleagues can weigh in on that.
Councilmember McCover?
Thank you. I think, looking back at the earlier public comments, including from Laura Barclay with OTBA, their proposal, and obviously it's just a proposal, was to have compostable bags for the larger handle type carry bags, which I think someone said were called the T-shirt bags, I'm not sure why. And I think that the other plastic bags that are used for the general bulk or raw produce, it looks like the way the document is drafted now, that those would be required to be compostable, but I was under the impression that, in general, for bulk items in grocery stores and so on, that we weren't saying those would have, the bulk food bags would have to be compostable, so
That was the change that, as I understood it, that you all voted on, yes.
To make everything compostable?
No, just the, just the in-store bulk bags.
Okay.
I think maybe a helpful way of thinking about this is, I guess there's two ish, two environmental issues with plastic bags. One is litter and clogging storm drains and things like that, and another is just the general impact of non-biodegradable plastic in the, in the waste stream. And the plastic, the carryout plastic bag ban, I think focuses mostly on the litter issue, and if you're getting in, because those are the ones that are more likely to be left, you know, dropped on the sidewalk and things like that, and the in-store bags, if we're going to regulate them, that would be more of a, you know, the broader environmental picture of, you know, that deep waste that doesn't
But are we saying that, and those various exceptions, including flowers and prescription drugs and so on, have to be compostable bags?
Yes, compostable plastic or paper.
Okay.
I mean, that, that is a fairly significant change to the ordinance, but one that, that I understood you all to be asking for.
Did, did we vote on that, though?
Last, last time, yeah, we did.
Okay. Well, I, I guess to me, that's still, is a concern in terms of some of what the, the farmer's market folks would, would face.
But the, the farmer's markets in this draft are out of, out of the picture. They could, you'd do plastic bags for every customer if they want.
But, but what about for the, the, the handled bags that they would have? At the end, are we requiring, under this version, do those have
No, they're, they're just, like you said, the farmer's market could do
Whatever they want.
Use whatever bags they want, for whatever purpose.
Okay. And what happens with newspapers and dry cleaning under this?
Well, it, for what it's worth, but I did research on the internet, and there don't appear to be compostable newspaper or
Dry cleaning.
Dry cleaning bags available.
But hopefully, they'll move in that direction.
Right.
That's the idea.
And just one side note, for compostable plastic bags, they are not like home compostable, they're compostable in
Right.
Industrial facilities.
Right.
Sorry? Councilmember McCover, are you?
No, I'm, I'm stopping now, sorry.
Okay, no, it's okay.
I'm, I'm cogitating.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Does it hurt?
Sometimes, sometimes it does, as we approach 10 o'clock.
I, if we're going to have a ban on plastic bags, I think I'm, I'm inclined to want to make it uniformly applicable across the board to all businesses, because when you start sort of saying certain businesses get, don't have to comply to portions of the law that other businesses do, I think you're starting in, getting into a troublesome area, where businesses will feel like, well, these guys are getting a break and we're not, and this isn't fair, fairness, the fairness issue. I, I have not heard anything that persuades me that the, that the vendors at the cross, the farmer's market absolutely have to, or cannot cope with avoiding plastic bags. I, I think maybe the idea of giving them, giving a one-year transition period so they can use up inventory is very reasonable, but the idea of compostable bags, I think, is to quote from this New Yorker article in last week's New Yorker, about this woman who has worked with hundreds of cities across the United States to develop bans, says that even bags labeled biodegradable or compostable really aren't, except in very few places like San Francisco, which has the sophisticated equipment needed to recycle compostable bags. The labels on these bags just make some people feel better about littering, she said. And I, I think that's a valid point, because they're not going to, they're not going to be compostable on their own. It's not like they're just going to evaporate and deteriorate like, say, a rotten apple core at some point. They're, they're, they're going to be in the trees, littering the streams, until someone collects them and sends them to a, what you just said, it's not, the stuff does not compost at home. And so they'll just be, I just think it's misleading.
The only real benefit would be for Tacoma Park residents who have compost collection.
So they can be put, they can't be put in your, like, your home backyard compost, but they could be put on the curbside composting?
The city does not collect that, of plastic bags?
No, the comp, so the compost bags that you would get, so if, so for example, you go to the Co-op and you buy peaches, and you get their compostable plastic bag. When I go home, I take that compostable plastic bag and I use as the liner in the bucket that I then put on the curb for recycle, for composting. What that plat, what that compostable bag, you can't do with it, is if I had a compost pile in my backyard, I couldn't take it and put it there. But it can be used in the curb, as the liner in your curbside.
For the food waste collection.
Yeah, for the food waste collection.
Oh, for the food waste collection. But I mean, if, if we want, we, I mean, that's for our home use, we can go to, to the Giant or the Whole Foods and buy compostable bags to collect, you know, put our food waste in. That's different than saying that we're going to give certain businesses the right at the point of sale to put, put belonging to people's purchases, you know, a bag of green peppers or something, and, and have that be an exception. I just think that there's alternatives, I mean, there's probably no family, no household in Tacoma Park that does not have a collection of cloth bags with handles, or netted bags with handles, or, or some other really heavy-duty carrying, carrying device. And I, I understand, I agree, that it should only be applicable at the point of sale. You can't, you can't regulate this, the stuff that's, as Ms. Barclay was saying, where people have the stuff packaged, it's in clear plastic, I understand, that's, that's different. But I, I just think that there's plenty, that we just don't need to go the compostable route, because, well, I might be the person who puts, puts it in my trash can, not everybody's going to do that, they're just going to see this as another plastic bag, and they'll just end up being littering the landscape. I mean, I think we need to get rid of plastic, plastic bags, and the only way to do that is to get rid of all of them. And I, given enough time, I think most retailers that are involved with point-of-sale bags will accommodate themselves. It wasn't that many years ago when our parents' generation used, all shopping bags were made out of paper, including the, the bags that the, the produce man in the, in the supermarket put, put your vegetables in, it was all brown paper. So somehow or another, we've managed, we've managed for a long time to be able to do that, I don't see why we can't go back to that, unless I'm missing something here.
I think, I, I need a point of clarification, because the way that it changed from the last draft is that the compostable plastic bags would be for the bulk items
Right.
And frozen foods, wrapped flowers, prescription drugs. In the draft before this, those items were still able to be put in plastic
Correct.
Bags. So the change was not, was just to move from plastic to compostable bags, not to say compostable is allowed. So, so the earlier draft, all these items here that are now for the following purposes were exceptions, basically, to the ordinance, and that you could still use plastic, I call them regular plastic bags, for those.
Yeah, no, I understand, some things like dry cleaning and, and flower bouquets, that are, that are going to need to have old-fashioned plastic. That's fine, I understand that those kinds of exceptions have to be put in until science comes up with something better. I just don't want us to make a distinction among different retailers in the city, be they farmer's markets or other kinds of businesses, I just think it's not fair. I just think it's not fair.
Councilmember Kresch.
Thanks, Mayor. I would just, I would join Councilmember Schultz on one point. I mean, I lived in New York City for many years and when a farmer's market came to your neighborhood, you knew that you were now finally the hipster neighborhood that had the most progressive sort of way of doing things. And, you know, I've done a lot of reading on farmer's market movements. And farmer's market movements initially started in this country not only because we wanted to support local farmers, but it was also the protection of the environment. Because I think there's a statistic that says in the United States, food travels 1,500 miles to reach your plate by virtue of the shipping and the containers required and the pollution that it creates with food traveling. And minimizing that with farmer's markets, you're addressing that, not to mention having foods that don't have pesticides and things of that nature. So it kind of bothers me that we've created this exception for the farmer's market where I don't really see a real need, frankly, personally. I think that there's a very good case that can be made to give them a period of time to get up to speed with the law and whether it's a year waiting period or whatever it may be. But I think we really need to be sort of as blanket as we can be. Now, with dry cleaning, the chemicals that are utilized in clothing for dry cleaning, I think, is another reason why there's a lot of plastic wrapping that goes on. But the avenue that Mayor Stewart took after somebody here came in and presented, I did the same thing. And I think that seems to be more of an individual decision and it could effectively put out of business a lot of dry cleaners. I actually go to a dry cleaner on New Hampshire Avenue behind my house and I had a conversation with the owner about it. And she explained to me the chemicals and what they're trying to separate. The farmer's market, it just seems to me to allow them to have an exemption is the complete antithesis of what farmer's markets were created for. And another thing I will note is that if you look at the ordinance as drafted, lines 76 through 81 talk about the section does not apply to dry cleaning or bags containing newspapers. Again, 81, the section does not apply to vendors at farmer's markets. But then when you go to the very beginning of the ordinance, line 17 through 19, it says, "The city council recognizes that plastic newspaper and dry cleaning bags will continue to have an adverse impact." If we are going to keep the exception in there, I would submit that we need to also put in there that any plastic bags used at a farmer's market equally has an adverse impact on the environment and that we shouldn't just single out newspaper bags and dry cleaning bags, but also farmer's market bags. And I raised this point last week and I appreciate Councilmember Smith taking up the torch on it this week with Ms. Barclay. I think that if we are going to create this exception, we as a city need to encourage the use of reusable bags. And whether that be we brand something ourselves by providing funding externally or I don't know how we do it, and get out there and hand these out. Because I think we're sending an inconsistent message to the community to support your farmer's market, but your farmer's market can use plastic, but nobody else can. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mail, would you like to join the conversation?
I would, and I'm hoping you guys can hear me. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. At first, a story or an experience. I was at a, I think it was a mom's market. It was a new market way down on New York Avenue in a redeveloping area of DC. And they only gave out paper bags. They had small paper bags, medium paper bags for bulk items. So granola and dried mangoes, you know, you put them in paper bags. I thought that was interesting. I hadn't seen that before. They completely moved away from plastic altogether or compostable. As I said when we last discussed this, I'm largely in favor of the ordinance as we had it written last time and willing to accept allowing continued plastic bag use by dry cleaners and newspapers and pharmacy bags, the categories we had, recognizing that, you know, we may need to wait two years because technology's not quite there and the supply is not quite there. With, if it's a way to incorporate farmer's markets that allows them to use compostable bags or use plastic bags, it's largely following.
Councilmember Mail, you're starting to break up again. No, we can't hear you.
I'll send it, just a message.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it.
Nice. Councilmember Kovar?
Thanks. You know, I guess it's tempting to say that we ought to have one standard that applies across the board, but everybody who's spoken has favored some exemption. So, or just about everybody who's spoken has favored some exemption. So it's not radical or a shock or some sort of strange idea that there are exemptions within it. Just different people have different exemptions. My colleague mentioned, "We're not including old-fashioned flowers," but we are. They're exempt in here, as I read it. And they would have to use compostable, actually. So they're exempt, or they have to use compostable. And my other colleague mentioned the, I'm not sure why newspapers have to have it. I guess if it rains. Right, but you don't have to do that, right? There's another way. They could put on your porch or whatever, right? I mean, all these things, and you could ask everybody to buy the thing that the mayor bought for the, for their clothes. But we're not doing that. So I think exemptions are there. And so the question is just, you know, which ones sort of have real-world applications? As I mentioned, I think the farmer's market itself, and I don't speak for the Crossroads one, but having heard from the Old Town one, you know, they're there and willing to have and indicated that they were, Ms. Barclay did, to have the compostable bags for the main largish bags. So they're not even saying, let's be completely exempt from everything. And so I guess what it comes down to is, you know, what happens for the bulk items. I think in particular, as Ms. DeKona mentioned earlier in the public comment period, you know, there are a lot of people who have bags and there's probably ways, maybe with our help or maybe with OTBA, through OTBA, that we could ensure that there's a lot of bags available. But to me, and again, I've said this before, we've taken a number of steps to give some sort of recognition of the unique role that the co-op plays in our city. We've taken various economic and other steps to try to benefit them. I think that the same kind of status, though in a different way, is true for the farmer's market and having some sort of accommodation for them makes sense. Now, I appreciated Councilmember Smith's suggestion to give them a year to phase in. I was under the impression in this ordinance, we're saying the entire thing gets revisited in a year or maybe two years. So I'd feel more comfortable saying, let's revisit it in a year and see how we're doing at that point. And then we can decide, look, you guys are doing fine, you don't need it. We could just ban it completely. But I'd rather not make it automatic at this point. So to me, require the use of compostable if we need to for the large bags, continue the exemption for the smaller ones and then with the revisiting at that point. But again, I just want to emphasize, I haven't heard really anybody say there should be no exemptions at all. Maybe some people think there should be. I haven't heard that yet.
Councilmember Seaman?
Thank you, Mayor. We seem to have gotten bogged down in the one area with the farmer's market. I don't feel the same bog myself. First, I would just like to agree with Councilmember Kresch's observation of lines 17 through 19. If we are going to say it, then we ought to be referring to all the exemptions and not just the newspapers and dry cleaning bags. And I'm not so sure we even need to say that there. The, okay, so we get down to the exceptions. And I think the exceptions that we have in lines 60 through 70 seem to cover the majority of the unique situations that need to be covered. When we then look at the line 81, which is the farmer's market, I don't see how this creates such a big hardship on the market when we're talking. We've already eliminated the small bags they have for bulk items. So we're really just talking about the bag that everything's going to be put in when they pay for their produce. So again, I think it's the same as the other stores. I don't see where it's a particularly huge hardship on the vendors at the farmer's market. So I would just suggest that we strike line 81 and move forward.
Councilmember Kresch?
I'm sorry, Mayor, that's an old line.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz?
Just to respond to Councilmember Kovar's point, I think that there's a difference in exemptions. There's a difference between having different rules for different businesses than what we are proposing, what I'm proposing. And that is saying that these exemptions apply equally to all businesses that do this, that sell these particular items. And that's a different kind of an exemption than saying some businesses don't have to comply with the same rules that other businesses do. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, I'm gonna, before, just to read, oh, sorry. Some comments from Councilmember Mail. He said, and I'll come back to this and we'll do a vote, a hand vote on, yeah, that was, I was just about to do that if people would, stop turning on the lights. I think we have a couple of things to take hand votes on. One is the farmer's market. There have been a couple of things put on the table. One is to include this, that the farmer's market is not excluded, but gets a one-year period of time to phase this in, has been talked about. So I would say if we could take a hand vote on that. So instead of saying that the above section does not apply to vendors at the farmer's market, we would change that to be that the farmer's market would have up to one year or two, whatever language the city attorney can come up with on that, so.
And that will be a ban of plastic bags at the point of sale?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
So before we do that, can I just get a clarification?
Yeah.
So another option would be to take them out of the actual exemption and put them into the category of the exceptions, right? So that, in other words, they could be, after line 70, they could be small letter, small Roman numeral six, meaning that they could still use compostable bags as those other items could, right? I mean.
Well, they would be.
Theoretically, they already are, right? Included there.
The, because of the bulk item?
Right.
Yeah. That's what we talked about the last time, is that, yeah. Okay.
Okay, I'm ready, Mayor.
All right, all those in favor of changing it so the farmer's market would be included in the ordinance but have up to a year time to phase this in?
Can I ask a point of clarity?
Yes.
You're referring to line 81.
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying that they would still, it would still not apply to them?
No, the ordinance would apply to them, but they have a year to phase it in.
Okay.
Does that make sense to do that one before we talk about striking line 81?
Why can't we start with striking it? Can we do that?
Well, yeah, I know we need to do that one first because if that doesn't pass, then someone may not want to strike it. Like, if we don't give them the grace period of a year, that might change somebody's vote, right, in striking it.
Whatever, go ahead.
So if you favor the year, then.
And this is instant runoff voting, so you have a first choice.
Right?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That makes, I think, all right, we could vote to say, all right, who wants to strike it? But then if the other one doesn't win, then somebody may want to put it back in.
I just think if you have a win with the other, if you entirely strike it, then there's no discussion of a one-year period. I know that's the least restrictive sort of option, but.
No, you can't do it that way. What's on the table is raise your hand if you support the farmer's market being included in the ordinance but having a one-year period to phase this in. Two people. Tim, that's three. Yeah, I already got him.
Did we just vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I vote for it as well.
Okay.
That would, basically, be counted out to striking line 81.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so those are four votes for having the farmer's market included beginning of one-year grace period. And that changes line 81 to that.
Right.
Okay? All right. You got that?
Yes.
All right. The other thing that people have discussed, and I just want to do a hand vote, is on line 49 through 56, which we did vote on the last time. But just as we go into the first reading of this, does anybody want to take out the requirement for the compostable bags? Because I've heard discussion of that this evening.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The 49 through 56, line 56, that now we're talking about the compostable bags.
The bulk bags.
Yeah. I thought I heard some conversation before about bulk now.
This is saying, do we want to permit compostable bags to be used and to come apart?
No, that's not what.
At point of sale.
This isn't the point of sale.
No.
This is, this is the bulk, bags for bulk produce.
No, this is saying you need to use compostable bags instead of other regular plastic bags.
You can still use paper bags if you want.
Right, but there's a certain standard that.
Right, but you can't use what I'm calling regular plastic bags.
Okay.
You either use paper or compostable ones. Okay? So we're okay with that going through to first reading. Sorry, I'm just checking.
Yes, that's fine.
I'm just checking Tim's comments. I'm just making sure.
I'm back on doing.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to do this and read your text at the same time. All right, so that's like 49 through 56, then stands as is currently written. The other thing.
Did you vote on it?
No one asked to.
Oh, oh, no.
Yeah, to change it, so. All right, the other thing is, I think the city manager, you wanted us to look at the date that this would go into effect because we had at the, on line nine, July 1st, 2015.
Yeah, we've been working on this for.
Yeah.
I think it would be useful to.
Unless we have a time machine.
No, that's, that's saying.
That's just saying that they couldn't recycle the.
Starting them.
Oh, right, no, but where is, do we have, sorry.
An effective date.
Well, you have an effective date of October 1, and the question is, is that what you want?
Sorry, I circled the wrong one, yeah.
I think it's fine.
Okay. All right. Is there any other?
Well, in line 17 and 18, I thought there had been a proposal just to drop the references to newspaper and dry cleaning bags and just say, recognize that plastic bags have a tendency to have an adverse effect on the environment.
I would join that.
Oh, yeah, okay. I just, I thought that, yeah, I didn't know if we had to take a vote on that. I thought we could just do that, yeah.
I didn't, we don't take a vote on it, but.
This was the section, the objection that Councilmember Seaman was asking.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So you're just taking out newspaper and dry cleaning?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the council, the committee on the environment also suggested in line 60 that we refer to bulk and raw items. And I actually think that's a good suggestion. I think it makes it a bit clearer to folks.
So candy kisses don't make it?
Well, if it's bulk, yes. Or I guess bulk or raw instead of and, sorry, I used the wrong.
Line which?
Uh, 60.
Six oh.
I think they said raw produce. Does that mean it applies to meat also or?
Mr. Mail just said something.
Yeah, we have meat in line 63. Sorry, Councilmember Mail, did you?
Disagreeing on both or raw.
Yeah, right, I meant, right, or. I just think it might be helpful to the public.
I think they said raw produce is the only thing, just to be totally. I thought that was what the environment committee had said.
There's no such thing as raw hardware items.
So I think raw produce might be, it's some word Smith here, but maybe smarter people than me could figure it out.
I like the rock candy.
Rock candy, yeah. All right, that's okay, any, all right, is there anything else people would like to discuss on this before we bring it back for first reading?
I'm like discussed out, thank you.
You're discussed out tonight? All right. I think we're good then for first reading?
Can I, can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. As I read this, if you look at lines 56 through 58, it says, "Used for the following purposes too." And I wonder if it makes sense to rather make it, and, and, you know, people don't have to agree with this, but you talk about packaging bulk or raw items or containing and then just listing these items. Do you know what I mean?
I'm sorry, I was trying to find my place.
So list all, everything through I through one through five? And I'll send you an email about it and then we can talk about whether that makes sense in wording. It just occurred to me because it was a little, to, to Councilmember Schultz's point, when you talk about raw, you also talk about frozen foods and things of that nature. So the bulk or raw is actually in line 60, but it's not in line 63. So I was wondering if there's a way, right after two, we can list all those, packaged, bulk, or raw, or contain, and then list in one, two, three, four, and five. But I'll, I'll shoot you some language and we can figure out how to word that.
Yeah, just, I mean, you could just say two, package or contain, and then bulk or raw, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would just read better.
All right, good.
Well, I won't send anything.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
All right, anything else? Nope. Do you have what you need this evening, Ken?
Yes.
All right. And then we will come back to it.
All right, thank you, Ken.
You're done, thank you so much.
All right, good night.
Have we done?
Yeah, we're done, right? There's nothing else on the agenda?
You're supposed to hit the gavel.
Well, is that just a guy thing?
It's a guy thing.
So folks will be back on Wednesday.
Have a good trip.
Speaking of guy things, who would do that on the.